The opinions expressed in this program are not those of CISA VII or Time Warner Cable.
What's your tomorrow?
And I'll begin by asking Dr. Michelle Langenfeld for some opening remarks.
Thank you, Dr. Warren. As we begin again today, I know that as Andrew Sarno, our Chief Financial Officer, introduced the budget last week, there were some questions that were addressed. I think our budget again is a reflection of zero increase in student revenue from the state, recognition that the district has really been focused on our mission of educating every child every day to be college career and community ready. So you'll see supports for the Da Vinci School, BayLink, and City Stadium Automotive. I know that we have heard from the Secretary of Workforce Development, Reggie Newsen, who has praised the district for continuing to lead and especially preparing students for family supporting and sustaining jobs. So I think the district's proposed budget is, would have resulted in reduced taxes for our homeowners, but that has shifted, and I'm sure you'll get into that a little bit about the funding with the vouchers as a result, and that the voucher program is going to cost our local taxpayers, and that we're really looking forward to addressing the needs of all students. And I think that our budget is a reflection of investing and putting schools at the center of our work. So I would invite Andy, I know he's here to talk to you about the budget tonight, and then we'll have public comments if that's accurate as well. So maybe you could address some of the things again in the budget that we talked about last week?
Yeah, thank you. We have an updated, it's gonna be a very similar presentation where I've got a quick PowerPoint that I'd like to go through, a little bit of discussion as well. And this is the community engagement session, so I am happy that a few folks are here this evening.
And do they have copies of this?
Copies are available just in case.
Yep.
Technical difficulties, I think we're getting there, if I'm not mistaken. Yeah, okay, thank you. Again, the handout, eleven by seventeen, you get to fold it open. I think we've got four important graphs there that tell a little bit of a story. We'll talk about that. I would like to point out the notice of the budget hearing. This was published according to requirements of the state statutes. And we did have that meeting last week, last Monday evening at four o'clock. This is a follow-up to that. Oh, boy. I'm glad that we have that ability. So the third document is a copy, and admittedly, this is an old document. It's as of October 2nd. It's a couple of weeks old now, three weeks old almost. But this was data as of that point in time upon which we ended up needing to get the information published and whatnot. So I will throughout the presentation be referring to just a couple of these documents and whatnot, so please feel free to keep those handy. We're gonna continue. Everybody's got a copy of the PowerPoint presentation. We'll go through it accordingly. So as I mentioned, first slide, thank you for coming this evening, and thanks for the community members here, and the opportunity to be able to present this information to them. It is Monday, October 26th, five o'clock, so this is the public engagement that we've historically done. Last week, last week was the official budget hearing. We are required by state statute to have that meeting, as I indicated, it was posted accordingly, and had a discussion about the presentation. We did go through the budget book a little bit. There were some questions that came up. I hope that I've addressed those questions as well as possible.
Yes, thank you, Andy. I think that was very helpful, the follow-up.
Thank you. I appreciate that. So if you do have anything further, please let me know. Dr. Wagner?
Yes, just for the record, would you share with the public what funds were we looked at per capita, I believe it's per capita, per student spending, comparing us to nine other districts in the state?
Yeah.
Compared to size. I think that's worthy of note for our public.
Yeah, that's really, would it be okay if I integrated that into the presentation a little bit?
Absolutely.
I will make sure I do that. So we did have the budget hearing last week. We can move forward off of that. The mission statement, the district's mission statement, as Dr. Langenfeld shared, we do like to believe that we align our spending and our finances, resources in general, with being able to educate every student accordingly. As I indicated last week, the budget hearing, it is required by statute sixty-five point nine zero, and we did have that. We do talk about revenues, expenditures, and fund balances. While we're talking about fund balances just a little bit, and this is an important piece of the district's finances, debt capacity. As I spoke about last week, the district's, the worth, the property value of the district is a little bit over eight billion dollars, and therefore, per state statutes, we can incur up to ten percent of that debt of our equalized property value, or eight hundred and eleven million dollars. Right now, our total debt is about twelve, almost thirteen million dollars. It represents point one five seven percent of our property value, or just shy of two percent of what our borrowing authority is. So we're very, as I indicated, we're a very low borrowing district at this point. And then not only that then, but that thirteen million dollars is going to be paid off in the fairly near future. So one of the interesting pieces of that, and this is where I look at the debt that we do incur, even some of the short-term borrowings and whatnot that we're dealing with literally right now that we'll be presenting to the board in November with cash flow and whatnot. Moody's this summer, we were rated AA1, and that's important, reflects on the district as we have interest costs and some of those other expenses. But I love to say, let's not pay for it here, let's get some of that money in the classroom. So the nine million dollars, I know that we got a very favorable interest rate this summer on the nine million dollar borrowing that we'll be paying over the next three years. So if at any point you have questions, even in the audience, please let me know. One of the things that is required to be disclosed at the annual budget hearing is our community service fund, which is our Fund eighty. Per state statute, we disclose this information, the programs. This was one of the questions that was brought up last week, and there are several things that we do with this levy, which is also offset by the fees that we collect. After-school programs that we offer our students, enrichment and whatnot, middle school sports, school and community resource officers, which again, that alignment of what they do for our schools is vital towards the climate and the culture of our schools. And then as well, our Board of Education Communications, that, these are the programs that Fund eighty offers. And again, I did address that in the questions, or excuse me, in the answers from last week's question. This is very similar to last year. There's no new programs. The dollar amounts are very similar. Nothing is new. Our auditors took a look at all the programs and offerings that we have. We're all in compliance with the DPI requirements. One of the other, and I won't read this to you, you've got it in front of you, but one of the points of last week's meeting is to disclose fund balances. And so we, through our different funds, we do have different fund balances. We did add to fund balance this past year. We do have areas that we will be spending that in the current year, and that is reflected in the budget right now. And that is Gatsby fifty-four, for those of you accountants within you. So I have two formulas that I'm gonna share with you this evening. We'll call formula number one, which is the revenue limit. That's the total dollar amount that we're allowed per state statute. It takes our per-student amount that's been governed since nineteen ninety-three, and that's calculated by taking our general state aid and our property taxes. Those are our two largest funding sources. And again, based on the number of students that we have and the amount of money that we're allowed per student, on the revenue limit worksheet, which is that kind of colorful one, on the left-hand side of it, about halfway down, it looks like we're counting students, which is exactly what we're doing. They take a three-year average. Last year, our three-year average was twenty-one thousand five hundred and sixty-eight dollars, excuse me, twenty-one thousand five hundred and sixty-eight students. That's our membership, our FTE. This year, it's increasing slightly, about a hundred and twenty students to twenty-one thousand seven hundred and eighty-nine students. Those are the students we're able to count, three-year average. And you can take a look then, the graph that you see, and that's out of the big handout. That's literally just our FTE, not a three-year average, but matches up with that twenty-one thousand six hundred and seventy-five students for our September count. So we've been slightly growing over the last few years. It looks like we're tapering out. And we do need to take a look at what the future entails, specifically as it meshes up with our facilities master plan that we are literally just kicking off right now. As I indicated, since nineteen ninety-three, and this goes back to ninety-six, ninety-seven, to take a look at that history, this is the dollar amount that our revenue limit per child that we're educating increases, or for that matter, does decrease, or is held steady. We had a slow, about two, two-and-a-half percent increase over the last several, many years. The two hundred dollar increases back in two thousand nine, ten, and then ten-eleven were the last two years that Governor Doyle was in. The decrease, it represents a five-point five decrease in the amount of money that we're allowed as a part of Act Ten. We are then a fifty-dollar increase, a seventy-five and a seventy-five. This year, as I have down in the bottom, no increase is allowed for fifteen, sixteen. We can't make any more widgets. This is what we're kind of fitting into that mold. Our revenue limit, that big dollar amount, is not increasing. Act Ten, as I indicated, you know, the negative gray bar there, that we're still feeling that. I mentioned it here a short while ago, climate and culture. There are things, more than financial terms, that we're still dealing with. However, Act Ten still plays a part because we did have some items at our disposal at that point to address the decrease in revenue. However, one of them was health insurance. Health insurance typically increases faster than what we're allowing, especially at a zero dollar increase in our revenue limit. So that continues to be problematic, might I say. So our fifteen, sixteen estimated revenue limit, so, I'll move it on the right page. Top left-hand side of the revenue limit worksheet, excuse me, top right, that dark yellow, we're not allowed anything additional, so we're at the nine thousand four hundred and seven dollars and forty-eight cents for this year. And we multiply that by the allowable, by the number of students, which was that twenty-one, almost twenty-two thousand students. And we're allowed then down in the bottom right-hand of the slide, two hundred and thirteen million, almost two hundred and fourteen million dollars is what our revenue limit is. Again, no more widgets, that's exactly what we're allowed. And what is that comprised of then? Is that I'd like to reformulate, shuffle around that revenue limit, because what it really is, is the state tells us what our revenue limit, the big dollar amount is gonna be, and then based on how property-rich or property-poor we are, we're then given a general state aid amount, and what's left then is property taxes. Okay? We'll talk about that a little bit more. So again, based off of that, our general state aid, state average, and I think there's something in the state statutes that still talks about a sixty-six and two-thirds amount, they call it two-thirds funding. The state average, because they don't have the money to support that, they're down to about sixty percent right now. We're at about fifty-eight percent. So if you take a look at what we're comprised of with our property, we're just a smidge more property wealthy than the state on average. You've got some very large population, excuse me, large property value per student areas. Last week, we spoke of Gibraltar. You've got the Monacoa side, you've got the Hayward side, a lot of water means a lot of property value. A lot of industry could potentially mean a lot of property value per student. But again, we've got some of that property value, but we're also supported by a fairly dense student population, so it's pretty well averaged out, which isn't good or bad, because it's all equalized. So, and again, Dr. Langenfeld?
Well, if I could add then, so if I'm understanding this accurately, general state aid is decreasing, the needs of students continue to grow, so, and plus zero.
Yep.
Okay, just, that's the formula we're really dealing with this school year.
Yep.
As we invite and welcome more and more students to our schools who've never been in formal education or in the country, it lends itself to that, and transportation, and all of those pieces aren't necessarily reflected in this revenue stream, you know, for increases. Is that, would you say that's accurate?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
And then, again, the first time in history that both years of the biennial budget, there is no increase in the revenue limit either year, for the first time in history.
Thank you for pointing that out. Yeah, we've been stretching our dollar, we've been picking the long-hanging fruit. We're under some pretty difficult times. We're still a financially stable district. I would like to point that out, and that's why we started that. But there is a sense of urgency to that statewide. One of the things that I would like to point out on the general state aid side, again, this is old information admittedly, but I wanted it consistent to what we've seen, not only in the newspaper, but also at last week's meeting, that orange bar graph, that's actually going to be decreasing by one point one million dollars as a reflection of the vouchers and how we address that. Literally, we're supposed to be budgeting for that dollar amount, literally a hundred and forty point seven million. It's actually gonna go down to one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, six hundred thousand dollars to pay for the vouchers that will then be distributed to the voucher schools. We're estimating, we haven't received that information of the actual students. We're guessing it's about a hundred and fifty. I don't know if we'll ever know that. This, the way that they're addressing this could change in future years, but this was a fix for the current year. And so that state aid, skimming that off, and that will be distributed. So that number is actually inaccurate. Mr. Becker?
Go ahead.
Sure, just to clarify then, the state is going to take away money from us to fund vouchers to private schools without even telling us how many, if any, of our own students are doing so? Is that correct?
At this point in time.
Okay.
If something changes, I know that you will be informed.
Okay, because if I remember correctly, when the best we could tell from the last round of vouchers prior to you being here, the number of Green Bay, current Green Bay area public school students availing themselves of the program was a very small number. But we'll just be billed by the state for a number picked out of the air, whether there's three or three hundred of our students using vouchers.
I hope that they have information that they're just, that they're using to determine the amount.
But they've not given it to us.
Correct.
They're not necessarily our students, because students that live in our district are allowed to enter four K, five K, and freshmen in high school without ever having been in public school. So even, so this number is not necessarily people that have left, or students that have left our district. Last year, I think the total was three in the Brown County area of public school students that took vouchers, and the rest had, were either homeschooled, or the majority, seventy percent, were kids who were already in private schools.
Yeah, and last year, close to eighty percent of the students in the statewide voucher programs were already attending a private or parochial school. So the voucher program has evolved into subsidizing a second educational system.
And I just wanna make sure that the public is aware that whatever this number is, you can't just divide it out and say, oh, that many students have left Green Bay to take a voucher, which would be the reasonable interpretation if someone didn't know all the twists and turns that have, you know, politically, I think, been designed to make this look good for one side versus the other.
Thank you. So we've talked about the total amount that we get. We've talked about the general state aid. What's left then is the second formula that I'd like you to go away with this evening. It's our tax or the mill rate. The mill is referenced to the amount of money per thousand dollars of assessed value of your home. But the mill rate, or the tax rate, equals the property taxes, the total levy divided by the eight billion dollars that our equalized value currently is. That's why it's important, is that we actually come up with that rate. So again, property values that drive taxes. On the bottom left-hand side of the revenue limit worksheet, that colorful, again, that reflects the eight point two billion dollars of our geography and whatnot. You can see a little bit of a rhythm. You can see kind of where some of the realty and some of the economic times and whatnot as we're dipping down. And I think a story could be told in just that graph alone, and what's gone in the area, recovery, growth, and whatnot. So again, this isn't just homes. This is the industry, this is the land, this is all of that pieced together. And the interesting part about this, and let me, yep, so I guess to come up with the answer, this information right here was nine dollars and ninety-nine cents per thousand dollars of assessed value. The prior year, we were at ten dollars and two cents. However, that nine dollars and ninety-nine cents is going to change. That's, again, a reflection, the amount of money that we're able to collect for those vouchers. It's all, this year, it's all based on taxes. Next year, it will not be. I'd like to disclose that. It will be based on that two-thirds formula. We'll be receiving about fifty-eight percent of that. And in fact, we might, depending on our population of students versus all the other districts across the state, might actually end up helping us a little bit with our state aid, because it'll make us look a little bit more property poor, which means we get more money from the state. But this year, a hundred percent property taxes, a one point four million dollar levy resulting in the vouchers. Okay? So that's why that's changing. Dr. Langenfeld?
Just a quick question then. If we get more money from the state, does somebody else in public education or the school somewhere else lose money?
No.
Or is the pot expanding at the state level, and if so, where's the money coming from?
I can't answer what, I forget, I apologize. I forget if the pot of money, the total amount, and I, seven billion dollars, eight billion dollars total that is distributed to schools, that's being skimmed off. I don't know if it got a little bit bigger, a little bit smaller. I forget. I apologize for not knowing that. But I know that that amount is essentially being skimmed to pay for all of those programs. Does that answer your question?
You mean the voucher programs?
Yes.
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 Yes. So the answer, the answer is yes.
Yes.
Somebody's gonna lose.
There's gonna be winners and losers.
There are winners and losers.
That's, if we get more, somebody else got less.
Yep.
But it's all public education that's gonna feel.
Yes. Prairie du Sheen, which might not have any voucher schools, they're gonna lose, because some of their money is actually going to pay for the other eleven million dollars towards the vouchers.
Right.
So that affects everybody, including our taxpayers.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. So again, total levy that's identified here, eighty-one million dollars dividing by the eight point two billion dollars comes up with that nine ninety-nine. But again, that's changing. And an important point again, and I will show the next slide actually, which it's a little bit inaccurate, but it's a good way to compare for those taxpayers and whatnot who own a home or a residence. This is actually spread out among all taxpayers. And the problem with that is that residential might be going up in value, reassessments and whatnot. Industry might be going down. Vacant land, or even agriculture, there's fluctuations all over the point, all over the place. And we have to estimate this on average with the information that we have and see what it looks like. And so this initially looked like we're gonna be saving an average homeowner, three dollars. But now that is going to change. And again, what's going on with the actual property values on average are going up by approximately two percent, but the mill rate is going down. So from last year, it's, on paper right now, we're estimating that this will end up costing an average taxpayer twenty-seven dollars more, but will go up just a little bit more because of the vouchers for this next, for the current year that we're in right now. Again, it's an average. But you can kind of see what, in that baseline, the two thousand ten, eleven was a hundred and fifty thousand, thousand-dollar home. That is fluctuating, and you can see though, through those property values, and then now that's increasing again. And we'll see what the future holds. We don't know. When can it all be finalized? Well, we're coming back to you next Monday night to set a mill rate, to officially approve the budget, revenues and expenditures and whatnot. But again, for discussion purposes, and I can guess, I can calculate some new information. I wanted to stay consistent with the message that was delivered last week. So these are calculations based on old data. But again, our membership count, an individual in my office who's responsible for the membership count, she just updated again last Friday. That will be reflected when we bring this information to you on Monday night. State aid amount, what's in this document, it's pretty close. It's not gonna fluctuate a lot, but it might a little bit. So we'll be bringing a final amount to you here this next Monday. You'll again have the weekend to review that information and whatnot. Vouchers, it's not in here, but we know what that looks like. And so, but it's not in here. So we do need to finalize salaries. Benefits are determined for the year, but again, we have some associations and whatnot that we still need to address throughout the year, and hopefully we'll be able to do that in a timely fashion. But I'd like to point out, the budget's a working document, and that's the thing. It's a living document. It will be continued to be amended throughout the year, and we'll be bringing those changes to you for at least awareness, if not approval. Okay? In front of you this evening, as it was last week, it's a three point eight million dollar deficit that's being presented with the general fund. Last year was a one point seven million dollar deficit. This year, it's a three point eight million dollar deficit that we will need to address, assuming that that becomes a reality. We would, excuse me, we would purposely like to spend two million dollars as promised for referendum dollars, twenty million dollar referendum, two million dollars to put towards chapel. So we would like to actually go into the negative this year on purpose. Again, no increase in the per-student amount of money that we're allowed. And then as well, staffing, we've been, it's been budgeted. We do need, I have to admit, you know, as things change and whatnot, we were able to capture some information. Over the next month, we will be double-checking, literally line item by line item, all the salaries and benefits, and making sure that that's all been updated and reflects accurate staffing throughout the year. But again, staffing as it relates to the raises and whatnot, that does need to be updated. Levy going up by approximately two percent. The mill rate, it was supposed to go down by about one percent, but it will be going up by about two percent, similar to what the dollar amount of the levy actually is. So we're financially stable. That's the good news. Vouchers threw a little bit of a curveball again, and we've talked about that fairly extensively, but that was the information as of about a week ago, week and a half, week and a half ago, excuse me. So new information, it will be reflected in next Monday's information to you.
I think one of the things that has remained consistent is the district is below average in spending.
Yeah, thank you.
I know that Dr. Wagner had asked.
Last week, and would you like to address?
A question on vouchers, if I may. In terms of money that we would be losing because of vouchers, does the district have the ability to increase our tax rate to cover that?
Yeah, that will all be taxes for the current year.
Okay, another question that you don't have to answer now. If we don't do that, do we lose that thereafter? There are some situations where if you don't take advantage of it now, you can't go back and you could later on, whether that's.
If you don't levy to the max, is what you're talking about.
Yeah. That used to be, that used to be in statutes a few years ago. They did eliminate that. You are able to recapture that amount specific to the vouchers? I don't know. So thank you for asking.
Well, we may have to hedge bets there.
I am aware of districts that are not gonna be loving for some of that money. I don't understand how they're doing it financially with the constraints that we have. It's gotta be placing them in an unbelievably difficult situation. So one of the questions.
Excuse me, Andy, can I just, I'd like to talk about that a little bit. I think, first of all, I think we should levy for that amount to cover the vouchers, because I think our taxpayers need to realize that they're being made to pay for this. This isn't just some free money that we're giving to parochial and private schools out of the goodness of the state's heart. Taxpayers will be paying, and I think taxpayers will have to decide if they want public money to pay for private education. And that's what the state is forcing us to do. And so I want our taxpayers to be aware of that, that they are paying for these vouchers.
Andy, you wanted to cover the average spending?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Yeah, the, one of the questions, in fact, it was the first question that was addressed last week, and I used fourteen, fifteen information, last year's information, because I know it's accurate. It was final. I don't know what's going on this year. So, but that dollar amount, you know, referendums and whatnot, some districts here on the top ten. So I ignored Milwaukee. I hope that was okay. I went two through ten in the districts. And so Madison, Kenosha, Green Bay is number four. Racine, Appleton, Waukesha, Clara, Sheboygan, and Janesville round out the top ten. The average with Green Bay is ninety-nine. round out the top ten. The average with Green Bay is ninety-nine seventy. And keep in mind, ours, and it's off of the revenue limit worksheet, ours is, last year, ninety-three oh four, point nine four. So, ninety-three, we'll just use round numbers, nine thousand three hundred dollars. That average with us is ninety-nine seventy. Okay? So, six hundred, six hundred and sixty-six dollars?
The top, the top is Madison?
Yep.
Or is it, no, it's Kenosha?
Yeah, this is in order of size, not dollar amount.
Okay, great. So, Kenosha is eleven thousand, fifty-five dollars. Madison is eleven thousand, twenty-eight dollars. Green Bay is nine thousand three hundred dollars. With the state average of almost ten thousand, is that right?
That's correct. Yep. And then, I took us out of the average, just so you could see, because we're skewing the average. So, without, without Green Bay in the mix, it's a little over ten thousand dollars.
What are those figures after the school district?
Yeah, that's the district number.
Oh.
We just pulled that.
All right.
Must have been a spreadsheet that was compiled. So, yeah.
All right.
Not enrollment or anything like that.
Yeah, I just wondered what, okay.
Yep. We're district number twenty-two eighty-nine, if you didn't know.
Okay.
So, at the end of the day, I remember during the referendum discussion, if we had the state average, or spent the same as, or spent the same, state average would put us at twelve million more a year.
Yeah.
And Madison, if we had their ability to levy at where they're at, it would be forty-two million additional dollars a year. So, it really puts us at a challenge. To your point about the vouchers, we already are at zero. We're already seeing more students with greater needs. We don't know how many of the students that are choosing a voucher are even our own. But more importantly, I think the other piece around the voucher that the public doesn't always recognize is we still continue to do transportation, even though the funding is not coming.
What is that, eight hundred thousand that we spend transporting private school children?
I don't know if we've been able to break it out for a dollar amount.
I mean, I'm not even talking about voucher kids, but I think over the past, we've always talked about eight hundred thousand dollars.
And that's a federal mandate. That's not a state. Correct. Yeah, and I don't, I don't know that anyone's complaining. I'm saying that's our reality. And so, when we try to budget and really try to bring, you know, modern, modern resources and supports and learning that really moves our kids forward, we are put in a position with this kind of budget that really starts to put us in places that we don't think is our best for kids.
Okay, and our problem goes back to nineteen ninety-three, when the revenue formula was established. We were always a low-spending district, and so, it was said at that time, Madison was a high-spending district. So, because, and we always were obviously mindful of our taxpayers and spending our money wisely, but that has hurt us every year since then. And there's no way, unless they change the funding formula, which is long overdue, there's no way to change that.
It sort of goes to my question about vouchers and whether we could after the funds.
Yeah, I think so. Any other questions that?
Anybody have any questions before we open it up to public engagement?
Thank you.
All right. So, at this point, we will, I have two people that have filled out forms that would like to speak before the board. And then, we call them up from the order that I received them. And then, also, if there's anyone else who would like to speak that hasn't filled out a form, we'll open it up once these two people have spoken. First, I'll call Paul Olexi. Yeah, sorry. To the table. Just state your name and address.
Sure. My name's Paul Olexi. I live at twelve thirty-five Porelier Street in Green Bay. You know, my comment, besides the financial damage that the voucher program will do to the public school budget, is a concern about public funds being spent in private schools, which do not have the requirement to be open as far as how they spend their money and how they run their schools. I taught at a private school for twelve years, and I realize how those schools are run and how those boards function, as opposed to a board like this, which is elected, and all of the records are open and available for public observation. It's not like that in a private school. And my concern, if that amount of money continues to grow, as it seems it's scheduled to do so, would have a large amount of public money, taxpayer money, being used in a way that's unaccountable. We don't have access to their budgets. We don't have access to their meeting notes, and we don't have access to exactly how they're using that money. And this is a, one of my primary concerns when it comes to this issue, not to mention how it damages our school system and the families that benefit from it here. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next, Tom and Amy Seber.
Hello. Thanks for having me tonight.
Good evening.
My name is Tom Seber, four eighty Masters Lane, Green Bay, Wisconsin. This is my wife, Amy. First, I want to thank you guys all for serving on the school board, sitting there and listening to the budget meeting. It's obvious that you have a dedication and a passion for the children of this community. I want to thank you very much for that. We are here tonight to ask you to look at your insurance policy. I sent you an email. You should have received an email yesterday from me, kind of outlining this. I just wanted to highlight a few points here tonight to make sure that you received the email. So, we're formally asking that you cover a treatment known as biofeedback for urinary incontinence. And further, we would ask that you would look into the policy, the health insurance policy that would cover new treatments, and when and if they're, and when and if they're covered. I'm not sure if such policy exists. If it does exist, I would ask that you review it. If it does not exist, I would ask that you adopt one. I want to just briefly begin with the process. I know most, if not all of you, have heard from HR on this issue already. So, we're coming in a little bit late to the game. But luckily, I know most of you, I've met most of you at community involvements or community meetings. Otherwise, I know you by reputation. I know you all to be fair-minded and open-minded, so I know coming late to the process isn't gonna harm our case here. So, thank you very much for that. I want to talk a little bit about our daughter's condition. She's suffered from daytime and wet time wetting, which is called urinary incontinence. As she headed into kindergarten, she wasn't potty-trained. We knew, I know, we should talk to her pediatrician about it. So, we went to our pediatrician and discussed the matter with her. She did some testing, put her on some antibiotics, some other courses of treatment. Tried a bunch of different things. Nothing seemed to work. It worked for about a week, but it wouldn't last much longer than that. So, after a year of dealing with our pediatrician, our daughter was entering the first grade. And then, our pediatrician recommended we see a specialist with UW Health, or Children's Hospital, I'm sorry. So, we met with the Children's Hospital doctor, and he did more invasive testing, testing that I wouldn't wish upon any female, especially a young girl. And then, they continued to put her on increasing doses of anti-bladder spasm medication, low-dose antibiotics. Same results with our pediatrician, it lasted about a week. It helped for a week or two, and then it would go away. No long, no term, no long-term lasting good results from the program. So, heading into second grade, we went back to see her pediatrician for the annual checkup. Our pediatrician asked how stuff was going with UW Health, or with Children's Hospital. And we said same thing as when you treated her. We're just not getting the results we wanted to see. She then told us about a program out of UW Health in Madison. The program at UW Health, she said, was exactly for the type of children that were being treated. There were people who've tried a lot of different things. Nothing seemed to work. So, we tried the program at UW Health. It worked, thankfully. We would, you know, we'd observe our daughter interacting with other children in school, and with, you know, just playing around the house. She got good at hiding in the corner with her wet pants. She got good at trying to hide things, but you could tell she just wasn't interacting with the children the way, the way other kids were. She'd say things like, will I ever be normal? Is anything ever gonna work? You can imagine for a seventy-year-old who's been wetting since she's been born, that it's a difficult circumstance. None of her peers were doing this. So, we found a program. We were very happy to get into it. We're very excited about it. Now, she can participate in sleepovers. She's doing great sports. She's an excellent athlete. She's doing lots of fun stuff. She's got a peace of mind. And most importantly, for any parent in the room, you know the self-confidence of your children in particular, my daughters. I take pride in them being self-confident women. Young girls now, women is the girl older. So, it's really nice to see that in her. We're here before you today. We've requested from HR that they cover this procedure numerous times. We got denied mostly because it wasn't included in the program. The only other specific denial request came when we were told that nobody else covers the treatment. So, we were accepted into the program in September of two thousand fourteen. We began a dialogue with HR on October third of two thousand fourteen. We started the program in February of two thousand fifteen. All along, I just assumed this program was gonna be covered by HR. It's proven to be effective. The results are a hundred, they say it's close to a hundred percent effective. The ones that are not one-hundred percent effective are still in the program. It's a newer program. So, they're still in it. They're still learning. They're still working with it. But they've cured everybody who's been into the program that sticks with the program. And the program cures, it cures the problem rather than treating the symptoms. For two years, one with, one year with their pediatrician, one year with Children's Hospital, they're just treating the symptoms of it, but they were never addressing the problem. So, we finally found a program that addressed the problem. She's now off of medication. She's cured. It was one-hundred percent effective for us. So, the reasons why it wasn't covered is nobody else covered it, according to HR. We told that to UW Health. They provided us with a list of nine major insurance companies. That's included in your email, along with most other supporting documents I talked about today. There's nine major insurance companies that cover this, including Aetna, Blue Cross, Blue Shield, and Humana. So, there's some major companies that do, that do cover this. And another reason why some of the major companies don't cover it, or not quite sure if they cover it, is it's a new program. It's only being done at UW Health in Madison. Nobody else is doing this program quite yet, which is why I ask that you, you review your policy and take a look at it. So, in summary, I would ask that you cover the treatment. We would add, there's eight to eleven million children that suffer from urinary incontinence, depending on website you look at. So, there's a number of kids that are, that are suffering from this. And this is gonna be the way it's treated. I mean, it's proven to be effective. Like I said, it addresses the problem. It doesn't treat the symptoms like every other program is doing now. It's just addressing the symptoms. It's not going towards the cure of the, of the actual, not quite sure what to call it. But it does, it does affect. It does work. So, we would ask that you adopt or have the policy explained to you on when new treatments will be covered by under insurance, especially ones that are proven to be effective, that will treat the root problem rather than just treating the symptoms. Our daughter would be on medication yet, into the foreseeable future, if we not receive this treatment. So, it's saving a lot of money. It's very cost-effective, where we don't have to be on long-term drugs, not to mention the self-confidence and everything else that came along with fixing the problem immediately. There are more details in the email. It's about a two-page email with supporting documents. Our contact information is at the bottom of that email. So, if you have any questions of us, I would highly encourage you to call us, email me, call us, email us, whatever, whatever you may, any questions you may have with this. We really appreciate your consideration. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Andrew?
Yeah, I'd like to formally request information from our insurance consultants that would include actuarial costing of if this were to be added into a health plan.
I'm sorry. I want to thank the Sebers for their comments. Unfortunately, we're posted for a budget session tonight, so this isn't on the agenda. Though, you're certainly welcome in public forum to make their comments. We're not able to discuss or ask questions because we're not posted for that particular item tonight. Just like in a regular public engagement session, if we're not posted for that particular item, the board doesn't ask questions or further discuss that, that item.
Would I can ask for something to be put on a future agenda?
Could you ask for that tonight?
Yeah.
I would encourage you to have a conversation with Human Resources, or Ms. Warren.
Pardon me.
Or, or Dr. Langfield, because we're not posted for that for tonight. Okay?
Yep.
Thank you.
In essence, it can still be done, but we have to do, talk through the hooves to do it.
This is our attorney. She keeps us honest at these events.
And this, we don't, we, actually, the, the budget we approved tonight, the decisions that are made about what is covered under insurance or not is a completely separate process from approving a budget. So, that's why state statute, state laws with open records, open meetings laws do not allow us to talk about something that hasn't previously been posted. And so, it's, it's not part of, it's, it's, it's more policy and insurance discussion. It's not part of approving a budget.
Well, isn't it pertinent to a budget decision if we elect to change something for next year?
But it's not part of, Andy, you want to come up?
Well, it has budget implications, doesn't it? Policy then budget.
Yeah, it does have budget implications if we're to be able to change the health plan. I don't think that's the intent of this evening's meeting.
No, but someone asked about it in a public engagement session. So, if I'm gonna vote next week, I need to know what.
But voting today, anyway, go ahead.
We certainly can, we absolutely can look into it.
Yes.
I'm just advising that I don't think we're posted for that for tonight.
Yes.
So, we can look into their, their concerns and their questions. I would just advise that there shouldn't be discussion and further comment on their comments, just like a regular public engagement session where we're not posted for that particular comments. But we can definitely bring back that information.
Absolutely, and whatever. The board asks management to bring forward.
This is like our open forum. You are perfectly fine in bringing this information to us, but we don't engage in discussion or respond to what's presented.
Yeah, I understand that perfectly. And if, you know, if, in this part, I see this part of the budget process, if I will have a budgetary impact, hopefully to the positive, hopefully save some money. I'm confident it will. But if it can be put on the agenda for your budget, you know, either policy a little bit before that meeting, or if it can be adopted as part of the budget, or discussed as part of the budget at least, I would greatly appreciate that. And if it's put on the, some agenda for tonight, then I know when it is going forward. I would appreciate that as well. If it can't be done, otherwise, I'll keep my eyes on the website for agenda items. Thank you.
All right, well, yeah, okay. Is there anyone else who would like to speak this evening? Seeing none, I lost my agenda.
Did I take that?
No, here it is.
I thought I did.
Right, that would conclude our agenda for tonight. Is there any final comments anyone would like to make?
If I could. I just, I know that it is a long and arduous process, and I want to thank Mr. Sarno for all of his work and his team, and everyone that contributed to the budget. As some may not be aware, Andy came in in August during a transition time with our former CFO, Alan Wagner, and picked the ball up nicely and is moving us forward. So, I'm grateful, and thank you, and thank your team as well. It's been a lot of, a lot of work, but I think, I think the most important thing for me is to recognize that it is a fluid document, and we'll continue to update the board as things move forward in, in this budget cycle. It's a unique time. There are a lot of unknowns in terms of what will happen with transportation issues, with students, with vouchers. There's a lot of things unknown. So, it'd be nice to be able to track and monitor all that. So, thank you very much.
Yeah, and on behalf of the board, I want to thank you too. And again, this is a working document. We'll start working on next year's budget at our next meeting.
We actually have the schedules on set up there.
And I know it's not, it's a, it's a huge team effort. It requires a lot of input in budgeting from building-level administrators, district office administrators, and a lot of people having a lot of input into the process. So, I thank you, Andy, and on behalf of, and then, thank everyone else that has had a hand in, in creating this budget. And I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay. Any other comments? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we adjourn. All right, we are adjourned.